I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carrasi, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amadis?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
Mrs. Dobus?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Present.
Mrs. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza?
Present.
Mr. Workmeister?
Here.
We have eight members present tonight.
Tonight, it is my great pleasure to say a few words about someone I have known since she arrived in Bethel Park 19 years ago. Dr. Dorothy Stark arrived in Bethel Park as principal of William Penn Elementary School in 1998, the same year I had the privilege of serving as Penn's PTO president. And between my years of service with the PTO and my years on the school board, I feel like I've been here for every step of her journey as an administrative leader in our school district. In her 19 years in Bethel Park, Dr. Stark has served this district extremely well in every capacity in which we have asked her to serve. Whether it was as principal at William Penn, federal programs coordinator, splitting her time as principal at Penn and Memorial when we had a mid-year vacancy, or moving to our largest elementary school, Abraham Lincoln, when there was a leadership void that needed an experienced and steady hand, Dr. Stark was always there to say, "Yes, I'll do it." It might have been a little reluctant on that move to Lincoln until she actually got there, right? We always knew that no matter the task, it would be done well, done and done well. That's why this board never hesitated to make Dr. Stark our Director of Elementary Education in 2012. So after a 34-year career in public education that also included being a French teacher as well as a reading specialist, we want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Stark for giving her absolute best, day in and day out, not only to her students, but also to her staff and parents, who all benefited from her leadership and guidance. Dr. Stark's official retirement date is February 15th, but her last official day in the district was January 13th. Being the true professional that she is, she was at our committee meeting last week, and she wanted to come back to be with us this evening to read her final good news report. Of course, we're always happy to welcome her back. But Dee, before we send you off to what we hope will be a long and enjoyable retirement with your husband, your three children, and your six grandchildren, we wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank you for all your years of service to the Bethel Park School District. When we think of you, the words "trust" and "respect" come to mind. You are a person of your word, and when things needed to be done, we trusted you to get them done in a timely manner. We also respected your opinion because we knew that not only were you knowledgeable in educational matters, but also that your heart was in the right place when it came to making the best decisions that would benefit children. At this time, I'm going to be presenting Dr. Stark with a token of the district's appreciation for her service to Bethel Park. It says, "Bethel Park School District Service to Education Award Presented to Dr. Dorothy Stark. By word and deed, your presence has enriched the lives of students and everyone you worked with and served as an example to all. Dr. Stark, we hope you will accept this award with pride, and as we wish you all the best as you begin this next chapter of your life. We know you and your husband are planning to downsize out of your larger home, but we hope there will be room for this on a shelf in your next place of residence, and whenever you look at it, you will remember your years in Bethel Park fondly. Your work was greatly appreciated, and you will be missed." Will you join me at the podium, Dee? An audience, would you please give her a round of applause?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. From the beginning to the end, thank you so much. Thank you very much. It's beautiful, Dee. I just want to say, without getting too teary, that really working with the families and teachers and school board in Bethel Park has just been the finest career experience I've ever had. I'm really going to miss it. I'm going to miss all of you. Although sleeping in till 8 o'clock in the morning is lovely, it's lovely. It has been a wonderful ride with terrific people, great children, great teachers, and I bless you all for the time that I've been able to spend with you. Thank you so much.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 8 to 0. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the combined committee and regular meeting of November 15, 2016, and the reorganization meeting December 6, 2016.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 8 to 0. I need to announce executive sessions held November 29, 2016, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information; December 6, 2016, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information; January 11, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information; January 17, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information; and January 24, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. We will move into staff report, and I'm actually going to call on Dr. Pascarella first on that one.
Every January, we pause to salute a group of nine people who spend dozens of hours each month volunteering, leading our schools, and making difficult decisions. I'm referring to our nine school board directors. The Bethel Parks Board of School Directors are among 4,500 Pennsylvania school directors who oversee the 500 public school districts in the state. Even though they are elected locally, the Pennsylvania State Constitution delegates to them the responsibilities of Agents of the General Assembly. And even though they are elected, school directors are the only officials in Pennsylvania who serve without pay. You're probably thinking to yourself, "Why would these people spend countless hours each year attending these meetings, familiarizing themselves with legislation that impact our schools?" The answer to that question is a simple one. Whether they have school-aged children or their children are grown, school directors embody the spirit of public service. Their desire to give back and contribute to public education is their primary motivating factor to be a school director. Our school directors spend numerous hours reviewing budgets, approving curriculum and textbook choices, reviewing hiring decisions, adopting policy, and evaluating the academic and operational results of the school district. These tasks are a necessary part of the job that school directors do to benefit our children. The Pennsylvania School Boards Association designates each January a School Director Recognition Month, and it's only appropriate that we take this time to recognize our hard-working, committed school board members for playing a significant role to create an educational environment where successes can occur for every one of our students. While we would like to be able to give you a more valuable token of our appreciation, instead, we hope you will accept this small token as our thanks for everything that you do. At this time, we are distributing envelopes, containing certificates from PSBA and a copy of the annual resolution passed by PSBA for School Director Recognition Month. And since we know the weather is going to turn much colder by the end of the week, we also have for you a Bethel Park winter scarf to help you stay warm and healthy this winter. At this time, I would like the audience to please join me in a round of applause for our nine school directors. This time, it's also my pleasure this evening to recognize two members of our school board who have made the PSBA honor roll of school board service. School directors today have a challenging job in our complex society, giving more and more of their personal time to this non-paid volunteer effort. Since 1983, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association has been recognizing the contributions of dedicated local school directors with long-term service. School directors are first recognized when they reach eight years of service and again every four years thereafter through the honor roll of school board service. The honor roll is PSBA's way of saying thank you to those individuals who exemplify leadership and statement-ship, giving unselfishly of their time and talents for the future of our public schools. It is my pleasure to first recognize Board Vice President Russ Spicuzzo for completing his eighth year of service to the board and qualifying for the honor roll for the first time. Thank you for your service, Mr. Spicuzzo.
The second certificate tonight goes to a school board veteran who has not only served on the Bethel Park Board of School Directors, but also represents Bethel Park on various local and state levels. It is my pleasure to recognize School Director Connie Rule for her 20 years of service.
And now I turn the meeting back over to you, Ms. Rule.
Thank you, and thank you so much. Thanks, Vicki, for getting us scars this year. That sounds wonderful. And now, Dr. Stark, final time.
The final time. Those of you who've been here frequently know that we always have a good news report, and this one is a little bit longer. We're pleased to have Vicki back, whole and well, and so we have good news from October till now. So sit back, relax. Bethel Park High School freshmen who are participating in the introductory STEAM course are getting great hands-on experience using the human-centered design approach. According to the human-centered design process, students begin planning their projects using a series of divergent critical thinking and brainstorming activities. Next, they consider how people would interact with a proposed innovation. They do so by observing, interviewing, and researching their prospective users and their needs. Projects thus far have included inventions, building robotic vehicles with little bits electronics, conductive sewing, paper circuitry, and virtual reality video recording and editing. Students prototyped and presented their designs, which included such ideas as a portable backpack grill, a lunchbox that heats and cools food, a school participation reward app, and a smart locker filled with useful gadgets. The class is being team taught by Lee Cristofano, Jonathan Derby, and Charles Youngs. The 16 students in Brad Schustowski's Computer Integrated Manufacturing Class at Bethel Park High School are partnering with students from Upper St. Clair High School to gain some hands-on, real-world experience working with the EA Fab Corp. in Oakdale. EA Fab works with the steel industry in the United States and Mexico to provide equipment and repairs to existing equipment. EA Fab has given the students four assignments: to create an app that will regulate and monitor water through a radiator, creating a virtual reality marketing video that explains the company's manufacturing process, designing a rigging protocol for the safe maneuvering and servicing of heavy equipment, and looking at the factory floor to find inefficiencies and redesign it to make it more efficient. The students are excited about being able to look at real-world problems and collaborate to develop viable solutions to these issues. They will present their projects to the company owners at the end of February. Several Bethel Park High School students earned the Extra Effort Award from the Steel Center for Career and Technical Education for their demonstration of outstanding attitude, work ethic, attendance, and dependability. Earning the award for the first quarter of 2016-17 school year were Ashley Applegarth, Jake Fazio, Alex Perziola, and Rachel Yanayon. Earning the award for the second quarter were Josh Guffey, Cameron McGill, Jersey Penrod, Jacob Richard, and Paige Williams. Congratulations to all of these students. Forty Bethel Park High School students earned 14 first place, 11 second place, and eight third-place awards at the DECA District Career and Development Conference and have now qualified to compete at the state conference, which will be held next month in Hershey. All of the winners' names are on the slide before you, but we wanted to give special recognition to our first-place winners. Congratulations to Sidney Burns, Sarah Gilliam, Sammy Dunn, Rachel Gilliam, Rachel McLean, Justin Lesnak, Katie Bustamante, Alyssa George, Paige Davinson, Marissa Christensen, Max Heller, Max Chapani, Tyler Timmons, David Conley, Zach Sankar, Tarush Ball, Maggie Wolfe, Lance Chorney, and Alex Dugweed. And good luck to all of our students who are preparing to compete at states. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School senior Kevin Yoast its October Student of the Month, and seniors Carolyn Cook and Jessica Veman its December Students of the Month. Each month during the school year, the Rotary Club recognizes Bethel Park High School students for their outstanding commitment to school and/or community service. Kevin was recognized for his efforts as the Chair of the National Honor Society's Community Service Committee and especially for his work to coordinate the group of student volunteers who assisted at the South Hills College Fair, which the high school hosted in October. Carolyn and Jessica were recognized for the more than 150 hours of community service they each participated in, which qualified them to be among the group of 121 area young women who were presented with the Joan of Arc Medallion by Pittsburgh Catholic Bishop David Zubik at this year's St. Lucy's Alguirury to the Blind Medallion Ball. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School musicians Jacob McCormick and Bruce Deal, who successfully auditioned and were selected to play in the Pennsylvania Music Educator Association's Honors Jazz Band Concert. Sixteen Bethel Park High School vocalists were selected to represent their school at the PMEA District Chorus Concert. Congratulations to Natalia Antkoviak, Angelina De Felice, Kayla Dell, Garrett Hoffman, Michaela Eisenberg, Sebastian Lys, Anthony Lukidi, Patrick McCall, Jeff McCain, J.D. Measures, Brian Pauly, Tyler Petrosi, Daniel Sidor Franzak, Cam Silman, Adrian Slater, and Jerry Vargazy. Eleven of our high school musicians will participate in the PMEA District Band Concert, which will be held next month. Representing Bethel Park in this event will be Carly Kaminski, Cheyenne Myers, Jacob McCormick, Joe Musser, Casey Hammer, Maria Jay, Ken Barnhart, Bruce Deal, Connor Remington, Jonathan Lukidi, and Tyler Petrosi. Seven Bethel Park High School students successfully auditioned and were selected to play in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's District Orchestra Concert. Congratulations to Emily Kouser, Ethan Tabler, Alexandra DeRose, Madison Newman, Tyler Petrosi, Connor Remington, and Janelle Wu. Our high school fall sports teams had successful seasons, qualifying for the Whipple Playoffs were the football, boys soccer, girls cross-country, and boys cross-country teams. Our most successful team this past fall was the girls volleyball team, who advanced all the way to the Whipple Championship Constellation Match. On an individual level, Erin Cavrack qualified to compete in the Whipple Individual Finals in girls golf. Way to go Hawks! We normally wait until the season is over, but congratulations to the Bethel Park High School Varsity Competitive Cheerleading Squad, who are the state champions in the Small Varsity Division. The squad heads to Orlando, Florida next month to compete in the National Cheerleading Championships, where they are the defending champions in the Small Varsity Division. Congratulations and good luck to the squad. Independence Middle School Principal David Mensch challenged every one of his teachers, no matter what the subject matter, to create at least one STEAM-themed project for their students this school year, and the Spanish teachers came up with a great STEAM community project. Students worked in groups of four to select a Spanish-speaking city to study. They created a Google Slides presentation that included a video of one of the students giving a weather report in Spanish for their city, as well as Fahrenheit and Celsius temperature conversions. The students also used a 3D printer to create a monument that would be at the center of their city's plaza. They also created a 3D grid of their city and made 10 buildings that would be in the city and placed them appropriately on the grid. Then they gave a verbal presentation of their city in Spanish to their classmates, who graded them on content and their Spanish-speaking skills. Three Independence Middle School 8th grade students were among the 15 finalists in the Veterans of Foreign Wars Patriots-Penn Essay Contest. The theme of the contest was "The America I Believe In," and Erin Carter, Olivia Tabler, and Alyssa Vetery were honored at a ceremony that was held at the Library Volunteer Fire Company, where they were presented with a certificate and $50 for being finalists. Congratulations to these three outstanding writers. The 60 students in the Neil Armstrong Middle School Science Club are having a great year participating in several hands-on activities. Because the group is so large, they are divided into two groups of 30, and they meet with club sponsor Wendy Herzl once a month. So far this school year, the students were able to taste test Jell-O that glowed in the dark under a black light. In November, the students began participating in Physics Quest, a middle school science competition sponsored by the American Physical Society. Through this program, the students are exploring currents, electricity, and lighting, and even use Play-Doh as a wire substitute. As the year goes on, the students will explore the science of their senses, optical illusions, and solar science. Bethel Park Elementary students had the opportunity to better understand how their favorite computer games work by participating in an activity called Hour of Code. Students in all grades participated, using a variety of unplugged and plugged-in activities, using some creative offline tools such as the Robot Turtle Board game and the Programmable Robot Mice. Students learned and practiced 21st century skills such as problem analysis and algorithmic thinking. Students also had the opportunity to use technology by experiencing various coding applications, including Scratch Junior, Code.org, and Codable. Lincoln kindergarten students welcomed letterperson Miss S. into their classroom. To commemorate her visit, the students decided to coordinate a school-wide Super Sock Drive. Lincoln students donated 330 pairs of new socks to the drive, and the socks will be donated to the South Hills Interfaith Movement, better known as SHIM. Thanks to everyone who participated. Franklin Principal Teresa Dumont believes it's never too early to begin thinking about the future, so she organized the school's first career fair to expose Franklin students to a variety of careers, including insurance, banking, event planning, postal inspector, police, sports management, nursing, dentistry, and talent management. Several community members generously donated their time to give appropriate hands-on presentations to the Franklin students, who enjoyed learning more about the kinds of things they can be when they grow up. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park once again delivered a copy of a student's dictionary to all Bethel Park 3rd graders, as they do every school year. These are not classroom sets of books, rather, they are the students' own copies to keep. The dictionaries will come in handy when the Rotary Club hosts the 5th Annual Bethel Park 3rd Grade Spelling Bee on Thursday, March 2nd, at Neil Armstrong Middle School. The Bethel Park School District is proud to have not one, but two teachers honored as finalists for the 2017 Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to Franklin 4th grade teacher Catherine Mutie and Bethel Park High School Marketing teacher Emily Smaller, who were honored in December at a ceremony and luncheon held in Hershey. They join a growing fraternity of six other Bethel Park teachers, who have either been named a finalist or semifinalist in this program since 2008. While they may not have been recognized as Pennsylvania's Teacher of the Year, they certainly are recognized as winners in our classrooms. Congratulations to Mrs. Mutie and Mrs. Smaller. We thank them for bringing this recognition to Bethel Park. The Pennsylvania Chapter of the National State Teacher of the Year recognized two Franklin Elementary School teachers with the Apple Award for their exceptional efforts in teaching, coaching, and other efforts that support educational excellence. Receiving these awards were 2nd grade teacher Brittany Cook and 3rd grade teacher Lindsay Crowley. They were nominated by our 2017 PA Teacher of the Year finalist, Catherine Mutie. Congratulations to these two outstanding teachers. Franklin kindergarten teacher Lisa Jones received a $250 Kickline Cash for Classrooms grant from Kickline Dance Studio. She will use the money to create a discovery station in her classroom to provide students with activities that will foster their creativity and problem-solving skills through manipulatives, mechanisms, and creation stations. She was eligible to apply for this grant because one of her students, Reagan Foote, is a student at Kickline. Memorial Librarian Kathy Oskowski wrote a successful grant application and will receive $600 worth of STEAM materials from the Society of Analytical Chemists of Pittsburgh. With that money, Memorial students will be able to work with three Kiva wooden plank construction sets, a Connects Building Simple Machines set, a Connects Construction Set, and a D-Sticks set that will be used in the new maker space in the library. Mrs. Oskowski's students enjoy participating in the monthly STEM lessons she creates for them, and these new materials will enable the students to have more hands-on opportunities when they visit the library and after they finish their assignments and choose their books. Mrs. Oskowski has big plans for the maker space in the library. Stay tuned to learn more. Bethel Park High School Science teacher Barbara Isel was asked by the Department of Energy to participate in the filming of a video that will be shown to teachers in Hawaii to encourage them to form teams of students to compete in the Science Bowl. Mrs. Isel was asked to participate because she is the longest participating female advisor of a Science Bowl team in southwest PA, having coached successful Bethel Park High School Science Bowl teams for the past 10 years. Mrs. Isel's portion of this video was filmed in her own classroom at Bethel Park High Kindergarten registration for the 2017-18 school year is occurring one month earlier than in previous years. Kindergarten registration begins in February, and parents of children who will be age five honor before September 1, 2017, are asked to register their children for kindergarten at that time. Kindergarten registration forms are available on all Bethel Park Elementary School webpages, or they can be picked up at any elementary school. Parents should have the forms completed prior to their child's registration day, and when they come to registration with their child, they should not only have the completed registration forms, but also their child's original birth certificate and proof of Bethel Park residency. We encourage all parents to register their children in February so they can attend kindergarten orientation in May. Anyone who has questions about Bethel Park kindergarten is encouraged to call any of our elementary schools. And this concludes my final good news report for Bethel Park. It has been my pleasure to share all of these good news reports with you. We have much to be proud of in our district. Thank you.
We sure do, and thank you, and best wishes. Student Government.
So two Fridays ago, we were able to have a spirit assembly where both teachers and students could get involved with a dodgeball tournament. So that was cool. There was a lot of involvement with that. And then, looking ahead, we'll have a Whole Spirit Week in February, where we hope to get a lot of student and teacher involvement. So that is what we're looking forward to. Thanks.
Good spirit. Thanks. PTA/PTO Council.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laura Hoffman, and I am co-president of the PTO Council. So I am here this evening to represent all of the PTOs and to share with you a little bit about what they have been doing within their buildings for the past six, eight weeks. Let's start with Abraham Lincoln. During Lincoln's holiday parties, Santa made an appearance to deliver classroom gifts to each classroom during the parties with an extra-special personalized letterpeople gifts for the Lincoln kindergartners. Lincoln's Santa Shop and Cupcakes with Santa event were a great hit with the students. Lincoln's annual bowling party at Legacy Lanes, which has traditionally been held on Martin Luther King Day, was rescheduled due to the Snow Make-Up Day. The new date for the bowling party will be February 20, which is President's Day. The new date for the bowling party will be February 20th, which is President's Day. And finally, for Lincoln, their annual talent show is on schedule to take place at Lincoln on February 3rd at 7:00 PM. Ben Franklin has reported that they've had a very busy start to the year. They kicked off January supporting their principal, Mrs. Dumont, with their first and annual, excuse me, hopefully, annual career fair, as we just heard about earlier. But for them to share, this is what they had to say. They had 10 different Franklin parents and community members come in to spend the day with the students. Throughout the day, groups of six to eight students got to learn and understand the ins and outs of many different career paths. It was a really wonderful event for all those involved. And Franklin is getting ready to host a spirit night at Panera, and they have also begun to plan for their fifth annual Read-a-Thon. Maybe? We'll go on. Memorial. Memorial's Holiday Shop was held from November 30th through December 2nd. The kids have always enjoyed shopping for their own family members and, of course, themselves. On December 1st, Memorial Elementary had a holiday festival. This event was held in the evening in their multipurpose room. There were craft stations, game stations, snacks, and, of course, Santa made a visit. Memorial's annual Five Below fundraiser was held from December 9th through the 19th, and the holiday parties were held on the 22nd. The school store, which benefits the fourth-grade activities, was held on January 13th. And Memorial's Read-a-Thon began this past Friday on January 20th and runs through February 6th. Along with this, they held a book fair at Barnes &amp; Noble this past Saturday on the 21st. This was a fun day to stop in at Barnes &amp; Noble, to see some friends, get some books, go on a scavenger hunt, and hear stories read by some of their favorite teachers. This month, the students also registered for the Pittsburgh Kids Marathon, which will be held in May. To prepare for this race, their running club, the Memorial Movers, will begin their training sessions starting in March. In February, Memorial will have their science and art expo, and the students will also begin to practice for their talent show, which will take place at the end of March. At George Washington. Washington sponsored a movie night on January 13th. The students enjoyed the Secret Life of Pets movie while lounging in their PJs. Washington also recently held a pepperoni roll fundraiser, and it was a huge success. Their We Run Club begins its sixth year in February. Students will train for the Kids Marathon by exercising, stretching, and running on Wednesdays through April. The students of Washington will once again participate in the Jump Rope for Heart program, which raises funds for the American Heart Association. The actual Jump Rope for Heart program will be held on February 23rd. And finally, at William Penn, in terms of our elementary schools, as part of celebrating the holidays, William Penn had an event called Pancakes in Pajamas. The students and their families could have a pancake dinner, create their own ornament, have their picture taken at a selfie booth, and enjoy a surprise visit by Santa Claus. The Santa Shop was another event that was held to give the students an opportunity to purchase Christmas gifts for their family and friends. Students and staff had a great time at their holiday parties. Fourth grades combined their classroom parties in the multipurpose room. And they are beginning a Student of the Month program. Participation by the students is voluntary. Students can request an application in the office, which is great appropriate, and the subject matter is related to the character trait of the month. All students who participate will be acknowledged, and the student chosen for the month will have their picture and submission displayed on the bulletin board. Their Pittsburgh Popcorn Company fundraiser has recently ended, and they are now looking forward to their first family game night, which will be held next month. Moving on to our middle schools. Neil Armstrong PTO has been very busy this past month. They had a very successful charity carnival, in which they were able to raise over $5,000 in two hours for the American Cancer Society and SHIM. Their annual Santa Shop was a big hit with the kids. The NAMS PTO was able to work some magic and to make sure that every child at NAMS was able to afford gifts for their loved ones. NAMS PTO raised enough money from its last fundraiser to afford an internet safety speaker for the parents at NAMS. And finally, they wanted to share that they are looking forward to hosting the second annual dance and talent show, which will be coming up. And finally, for IMS. Bold, the Boys' Only Leadership Development, and Gold, Girls' Only Leadership Development events are coming up. Gold will take place this Friday, January 27th, and Bold will be on Friday, February 10th. Both events start directly after school, from 2:30 until 10:00 PM. Students from the TLC Club at the high school will lead the participating eighth graders through all of the activities, share insight and stories, advice, and answer any questions they might have about the high school. They also provide a friendly face and someone they can turn to at the high school come next fall. Bold and Gold were established over 15 years ago as a means to introduce and to help prepare the eighth graders for their transition into the high school. And finally, from the IMS PTO, they are holding a fundraiser for their library to help furnish comfortable seating zones within the library. For this event, they are holding, all the ladies in the community are welcome to Level 20 Sports Bar Restaurant on Friday, February 24th, for an '80s Ladies Night. There'll be a DJ, 50/50, basket raffles. Tickets are $30, include dinner and a drink, and they are on sale at the library within the school or at Level 20. And that is our report from the PTO Council this month. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm feeling really old. I was here when D. started, and I was in here when Bold and Gold started, too. I was involved with that. Public comments on agenda items only. You have two minutes. Name and address at the microphone.
My name is Jen Garfold, 5917 Barton's Avenue, phone number 412-833-445. My son is in kindergarten, and he has type 1 diabetes. His nurse is very essential for his health and safety while at school. My son is only six years old. So, he doesn't understand how to dose himself. He has a pump, but he doesn't understand. He doesn't understand how to carb count. He has no idea when he's low, like a blood sugar of 55, or when he's high, like 350. He has no idea. He can't fully understand ketones, checking for ketones. Or, the worst case, he can't give himself his glucagon shot, because he is six years old. You might be saying, "I don't understand any of this terminology," but his nurse does. She fully understands the severity of those terms. Who is responsible if something happens to my son without a nurse? Again, he's only six. How would you feel if you had your nurse taken away? That's it.
Sandy Blackmore, 3540 Valley Drive. Once again, I know that we're going to ratify maybe a teacher contract this evening, so I'm glad to see that you are working with the teachers' contract or teachers to settle their contract, and that I hope you are working with the other bargaining units to help settle theirs. Thank you.
Hi, Sharon Jansek, 4314 Anna Street. Two things, I'll try to squeeze them together. One, regarding the nursing position changes, the Health Service Nurse position changes. It's my understanding that some of those changes would entail the Health Service Nurse not being in the building for the day, and coverage being provided by the certified school nurse covering the building. So I guess my question is, what would happen if that CSN were out sick and maybe a sub isn't available? I know sometimes it's hard to find a sub nurse. The rates aren't necessarily competitive. So what would happen in the event that the CSN was out and the HSN was also out on assignment for the district? Where would you pull from? And then what would happen to the kids in those schools if they don't have coverage? I feel like we're really spreading our nursing coverage really, really, really thin, which affects all children. It could affect all children at any moment. And my other question was, on number 10, the Personnel Committee, the salary adjustment for the varsity football coaches. I did look up Article 65 in the current CBA and read that, but I was curious whether or not there was going to be any information about whether there was a salary adjustment, or if you were approving the recommendation to not have one, or if that would be reflected in the new CBA, or what that was encompassing, which you may not be able to tell us, but that's my question. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Falbo. I'm at 1068 Sarah Street. I'm a noon aide at Ben Franklin, two days a week. And regarding the nursing cuts, is there going to be any training provided for?
I'm just going to stop you there.
Sure.
There are no nursing cuts.
There's not going to be?
There are no nursing cuts.
What if there is no nurse available on a particular day? Is there alternative training?
Well, we face that now. We have people that are out sick now and people that call off. We face that now. We deal with that on a day-to-day basis.
What would be the protocol, then, if what student?
We do have a protocol in place as to what we would do.
I, as a noon aide, don't know what that would be.
Okay.
While I'm at work.
And we'll have someone discuss that.
Okay.
But I don't want false information to be out there. There are no nursing cuts.
I don't intend to spread that. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Stephanie Silman, 5087 Sherwood Road. With regard to your comment, Ms. Cook, about not wanting false information to be out there, I know the board has expressed some concern over the fact that rumors often circulate online that contain half-truths, or assumptions, or complete falsehoods. And I would just like to emphasize again that that could be alleviated significantly if more information were provided to the residents well in advance of the meetings. I understand that there are certain things that are not known much before you walk in here, but there are other things that you do have significantly more information on than what is provided on the agenda that goes out a day before the meetings. And I know that fewer rumors would get as far as they do if that information were publicly available more timely. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is what we have in front of us what they have in their hands right now?
No, anything printed in red is not on an open agenda. Well, except for the add-on, but, I mean, the information that's given under each item, that's just given to board members. The add-on items are in.
Oh, so they do have the red information?
We have read on ours because the agenda from last Tuesday changed, so you have those highlighted in red. That's on the agenda that they have.
But they have all the agenda items that are in front of us right now.
Correct.
Well, we don't, we didn't. No, I mean, do you have right now what we have?
Yes. Okay.
And actually, Ms. Dobis, that's exactly what I was going to say. When you print it from the internet, all you'll get is approval of subs. But tonight's meeting is where it gives all of the detailed information. So what we get a day before the meeting is not what we get right at the meeting, if that makes sense.
But a lot of those things can change up until the minute of the meeting, and we can't put people's names and positions on agendas prior to that far in advance. I mean, legally, we.
Some things are personnel matters that we need to wait until they come up at the board meeting. Some things are student matters that are confidential, that can't be put on agendas. There are some reasons that everything isn't put on the agenda for the public as well.
The staffing level across the district is a personnel issue. If the public would like the opportunity to provide feedback about changing the nurses' schedules.
Well, you will hear tonight as to why they are being changed, and there is a legal reason why they are being changed. So that's sometimes out of our hands as well, and that's not something we could necessarily explain to you in an agenda item printed out.
If you understand that, that is why I think you're doing what you need to do. I understand that that's why people are concerned.
And we're going to move on, then, if there are no more public comments?
Melissa Rothniak, 5900 Barnes Avenue. I'd just like to ask, you said there are no staffing, no nursing cuts, but on nine, then number three, on my agenda anyways, I'm not sure what the board is looking at, but there are several items here where I'm seeing full-time Health Service Nurses going down from being there every day to one day, or two days a week, and not being there full-time. So, can you explain how that does not equate to a nursing cut, and why those changes are being made?
Let me first say, this is public comment, so it's not a question, related question-and-answer period, you know, where we ask questions about things and answer everything that's on the agenda. It's your time for two minutes to make a public comment about what you want to comment about.
Well, my public comment is that we all want to know what's going on in our school, and I believe that this is the appropriate forum for you to let us know that.
Well, how about when we get to that item on the agenda, I'll have Dr. Pescarella address when we're voting on that particular item, what we can address.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we good? Anybody else? I'm going to move into the business items on the agenda, and I'm going to turn over to Mrs. Rule, the Personnel Committee, to begin, and I would like you to just move item one, if you would please, on the agenda.
I move on item one, gratification of Bethel Park Federation of Teachers CBA.
Second.
Item one, under Personnel Committee, has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item? I will ask for a roll-call vote on this item.
Mr. Hammetts?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobis?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mrs. Rule?
Yes.
Mrs. Buciga?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeyer?
Yes.
I'm happy to declare that that item passes eight to zero. As you just heard, the Bethel Park Board of School Directors approved a new five-year agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, which will run from July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2022. Needless to say, we are extremely pleased that this agreement was not only approved months before the expiration of our current agreement, but that it was also approved without a stoppage of work. An agreement of this magnitude could not be possible without a sincere effort on the part of both sides to faithfully commit to the bargaining process, and that is exactly what transpired during this negotiation. Both parties knew what needed to be done to craft an agreement that was equitable for the Federation members, as well as the taxpayers of the Bethel Park School District. I can't say enough positive things about the spirit of cooperation that guided this most recent negotiations process. And while neither side could say that they got everything that they wanted, it was important for both parties to put the students first and get an agreement that was completed and that keeps our professional staff in our schools without a work stoppage, providing the best education for our students. Highlights of the new agreement include raises of $800 per year for the first three years of the agreement, followed by an $1,100 raise in 2020, 2021. Ooh, that's hard to say those dates. And a $1,000 raise in 2021, 2022. The continuation of employees paying either 10% or 12% of their healthcare premiums, depending on where they fall on the step scale. An increase in the teacher work year by one day to 193 days for the last two years of the contract. The ability of all of our teaching staff in grades 7 to 12 to teach a sixth period for a $1,500 per semester stipend, and the ability of 50% of our grades 7 to 12 teaching staff to teach a seventh period for a $1,500 per semester stipend. I want to take this opportunity to thank the members of the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers for approving this agreement last night. We appreciate everything that you do each and every day for our students. We especially thank Federation President Bill Wells and his negotiating team, as well as Dr. Pescarella and his negotiating team. And I personally want to thank my fellow board members for the countless late nights and the extra hours you devoted to helping this process. At this time, when I call your name, please meet me at the podium. I have a certificate of appreciation from the board, and then reme- I have a certificate of appreciation from the board and then remain so we can do the signing at the table. Mr. Bill Wells.
Thank you very much.
Hang around. Or go, I'm gonna go to the tape, I guess, huh? Mr. Tom Hare. Mr. Vic D. Ramparo. Ms. Lisa Seraphin. Not here. We'll keep her. Mr. Brian Homer. Mr. John Tushai. Mrs. Megan Sawa. Ms. Nicole Lobig. Where's my coffee buddy? She's not here tonight?
I've got two small kids.
Okay, alright. Mrs. Beth Ann Pedalino. My son's second grade teacher. I was gonna say, my second grade teacher, and everybody wouldn't know what I mean by that. I always say my. Mrs. Kathy Sayay. Dr. Pascarella. And Mr. Matt Howard, who is not here. We'll get that to him. And Mr. Bazi Karazi. And it's not too often that we get to do this, so that's why we're making a big deal out of this, right, guys? And we did that first, so you guys can go home if you need to.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Phil, did you want to say anything? I'm sorry. Mike is yours if you want to say something.
Mike, you didn't have anything prepared, but just say thank you to the board and to Dr. Pascarella and all of the other members of the negotiating team for everyone's support and working together cooperatively to get this done.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll move back on with Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
I move items two.
Do we want to hold out anything?
I was just gonna ask that.
Okay.
Yeah. Are items two through 10, are there any that anyone would like to have held out?
Two through nine, Connie. We're doing 10 separately, I believe.
10?
Yeah, we're doing 10 separately. I'll hold that up.
Any others? We'll hold these 10.
I would like seven and nine held out.
Seven and nine also held out? Okay. Any others? I move item two, that's approval of substitute. Item three, approval of extra duty responsibility program. Item four, approval of leave of absence. Item five, approval of administration tuition reimbursement. Item six, acceptance of resignation. Item eight, appointment of personnel.
Second.
Items two through six and eight, under Personnel Committee, have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Those carry eight to zero. Mrs. Rule.
You want me to take each of the following separately?
Yes.
Okay. I move item seven, be approved, change of assignment.
Second.
Item seven, under Personnel, has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Ammitz. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That item carries seven to one. Mrs. Rule.
Item nine, approval of staffing changes.
I'm second.
Item nine, under Personnel, has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Ammitz. Any questions or comments on this item?
Is this for you?
If no one else had a.
I think to clarify from earlier, one of the questions, was there a reduction in hours? But if you look with regards to that, you'll see that up above the position that was closing and being reopened, it was at seven and a quarter hours for five days per week, and you'll see that now it's going to be seven and a quarter, three days per week, and seven and a half hours, two days per week. So actually, that's adding some additional time to that individual's day. I think that was the question.
The question was on number three.
Number three, what you're looking at, as far as number three goes, is just changing of work time, not the amount of time. So the start times and the end times. And the best I could say to that, in a confidential sense, is that often we have to look at staffing changes to meet the needs of the students of the Bethel Park School District, and sometimes that causes for us to have to recommend to the board for changing start times and end times. But to the best of my knowledge and working with the Special Services Department, there's no change in the amount of hours, just when the hours are being worked.
Dr. Pascarella, can you also address, because there were some concerns brought up about call-offs in our procedures for doing that? Can you just run that down briefly as well?
Right now, obviously, if we do not. So if by chance we do not, if somebody is absent, health nurses are absent, the district seeks substitute through our precision staffing. If no substitutes are available, there are also two additional approved agencies who are contacted to see if there are substitutes there. Still no nurses are available, then the Special Services Coordinator, Lori Sutton, will work in conjunction with building principals to determine where the nurses and how we will best use the nurses that we currently do have to meet the needs of the students.
Thank you.
Any other questions or?
Can I say something?
No, ma'am, not during the meeting time.
There will be time at the end of the meeting, unopened, for any items to discuss, and you can remake your point then.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board on item nine? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That carries seven to one.
Item 10, salary adjustment for varsity football coaches.
Second.
Item 10 has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Can we do a roll call?
Yeah, do a roll call.
Mr. Ammitz?
No.
Mrs. Buckley?
No.
Mrs. Cook?
No.
Mrs. Dobus?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
No.
Mrs. Rule?
No.
Mr. Fuguda?
No.
Mr. Workmeyer?
No.
That fails seven to one, one to seven, because I do one to seven, one to seven. Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are seven items this evening under curriculum with any, like any, held out. Hearing none, under curriculum, number one, the January graduation list. Two, the 2017-2018 school calendar. Three, local holidays. Four, high school course selection guide. Five, independent study. Six, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, FCCLA State Leadership Conference and Competition. Seven springs, March 29th through the 31st, 2017. And number seven, High School to Host PMEA Honors Orchestra, November 2017 and November 2018.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through seven, under Curriculum Committee, have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I have a question on number two. Is that the calendar that is actually on the website right now?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I was a little late on the draw. Is there any way for me to vote separately on number two? Or is it too late to do that now? I guess I'm asking the solicitor.
You can vote separately, Mr. Karazi, just when you're taking roll one on the roll call, just.
Just say on number two.
Yeah, on number two.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Have the minutes reflect however you vote.
Thank you. I was, I'm sorry. It went so fast that I.
I'm sorry, I forgot. Any other questions or comments on the Curriculum Committee items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Number two opposed only.
So number two carries seven to one. One and three through seven carry eight to zero. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Spicuzzo.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Tonight, under Facility and Services, there are five items. Would anyone, like any of them, held out separately? Hearing none, I will move the following five items. Item number one, purchase of generator and transfer switch for the Benjamin Franklin Elementary Project. Item number two, purchase of lights and ballast for the Benjamin Franklin Elementary Project. Item number three, the purchase of a chiller for the Benjamin Franklin Elementary Project. Item number four, purchase of the boilers for the Benjamin Franklin Elementary Project. And item number five, the approval of plans for dugouts on Black Rock Drive.
Second.
Oh, this thing just messed up. Okay, well, anyway, I don't like this computer. Items one through five, under Facilities and Services Committee, have been moved by Mr. Spicuzzo and seconded by Mr. Ammitz. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
Mrs. Cook?
Yes, Mr. Means.
Number five?
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding, the reason this is all taking place is there, it's a change in, I believe it was the national standards for buildings, and it's reflected in our local ordinances, and we actually have to have this done by an engineering firm and have an engineering stamp on it. Is that correct?
I'm not quite sure all of that prelude to it, but I know we have to get a stamp from an engineering firm. That is correct.
Okay, and the actual dugout itself will be paid for by donation?
By and large, donation has been made by the BBA, and then our employees are going to actually do the building, so we're donating the services of the actual building.
Okay, I just wanted to explain what was going on here, so thank you.
Alright. Any other questions or comments on Facilities and Services? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry eight to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Ammitz.
Yes, we have seven items this evening under Finance Committee. Would anybody want any of these held out for discussion? Hearing none, I move all seven items, number one being the December 16, December 2016 and the January 2017 salaries and bills. Number two being the November 2016 financial report. Number three, the December 2016 financial report. Number four are budgetary transfers. Number five, adoption of the 2017-2018 preliminary general fund budget. Number six, the approval of student service contracts. And number seven, high school musical construction costs.
Second. Items one through seven, under Finance Committee, have been moved by Mr. Ammitz and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
Yes, Mrs. Cook, on item number five, Buzz, could you explain why and what, why we have to do that tonight? As big as legislature requires us to pass a budget so many days before the election, and this year it's in January, usually in January, sometimes it's even in December. This is probably not even close to what the final budget's gonna be, because we just, we kind of just throw our numbers in there, and we don't know what our health insurance rates are gonna be. We don't know what the date of the date is. And there's a lot of it that you don't know. So this is just very generic. Thank you. I just wanted everyone to understand that this wasn't anywhere near the final number.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on finance items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry eight to zero. Policy Committee and Mr. Means.
Okay, we have one item, and that's a number of policy revisions. This is a final reading, and the policies are 007, Policy Manual Access. 336, personal necessity leave for administrative employees. 436, personal necessity leave for professional employees. 536, personal necessity leave for classified employees. 622, the GASB statement 34. 810.2, transportation, video, and audio recording. And 827, conflict of interest. And I would move that all these items, all these policies under item number one be approved.
Second. Item one, under Policy Committee, has been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries eight to zero. Mr. Spicuzzo, would you take other for me this evening?
More than happy to. There are, let me make sure I get all the items. There are four items under other tonight, would anyone, like any of them, held out separately? Hearing none, I will move the following four items. Item number one, naming of a newspaper for advertising purposes, the Observer-Reporter. Item number two, Steel Center for Career Technical Education Joint Advisory Committee. The Board of School Directors approves Connie Rule as the representative, and Jim Means is the alternate to the Steel Center for Career and Technical Education Joint Advisory Committee. Item number three, student agreements. And item number four, settlement agreement and release.
Second.
Items one through four, under other, have been moved by Mr. Spicuzzo and seconded by Mr. Ammitz. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries eight to zero. We are now to the point of public comments on anything you wish to address the board on this evening. You have two minutes at the microphone. Name and address, please.
Hi, Sandy Blackmore, 3540 Valley Drive. Now that we have the whole agenda, in the beginning, you said, Dr. Pascarella and Ms. Cook, that the reason for the change was for legal purposes, and you would explain that. Cook, that the reason for the change was for legal purposes, and you would explain that when you discussed it, and I didn't hear anything about the legal purpose for changing that. And for number three, you said you're changing the working time, so there's no change in the assignment or their job, just the time that they're going to be in the building, like different time in the building? I just wondered if you could clarify that.
Only comment I think I would make to that is that, as I said, we are making sure that the start time and end times, if they have been moved, have been voted on, when the employee starts and when the employee ends. That's what was reflected in one motion, and in the other motion, we did increase the individual's hours. So that was reflected there.
Do you want to address the legal, when I said it was illegal?
Well, I really can't address the legal issues in public, but.
What you can, what you can say.
Again, I would reiterate from Dr. Pasquarela said at the beginning was that some of the staff moves are required in order to meet needs of students.
That's what it is. It's required to meet needs of students. We are legally required to meet needs of students.
Jen Garfield, 5917 Barnes Avenue. You just said you're, I understand that, you're meeting the needs of students, or whatever I just said. What about my kids' needs? I'm serious. Yeah, I understand, but I'm really upset about this. I have a great nurse.
One comment I would say is if you have an in particular comment about your individual student, I would suggest that you communicate your concerns, if you have one, to, about your student, to your building principal and Mrs. Sutton, Special Services, and if you don't get that answer, you can call clear up to me.
Okay.
About your specific student, because we could talk to you about your specific student, not publicly, but individually.
Okay.
I wanted to take a minute. I'm a little bit delayed, and I apologize for that.
Excuse me, can you state your name and address again?
Oh, I'm sorry. Stephanie Solomon, 5087 Sherwood Road. Back in November, Bethel Park Page affiliate attended the Page Conference. And while we were there, we had some discussions with other Page members. They host what's called Affiliate Weekend, where other affiliate leaders get together and compare notes and have discussions about best practices and new things that are happening in gifted ed in their districts. And we shared with all of the affiliate leaders all the work that was done by the superintendent and by Mrs. O'Rourke on the new comprehensive plan and the incorporation of goals for gifted ed in that comprehensive plan. And I wanted to convey to everyone again our sincere appreciation for those efforts and for including that goal in the comprehensive plan. Everybody at the conference was very impressed with the thought that went into that and the commitment that the district has made to its gifted students. And they asked that we send pens and lapel pins on behalf of the organization to all of the board members and administrative staff. So I apologize, I should have come in November, but, you know, holidays and all that stuff. So I did want to make sure that we take a minute to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sharon Jasek, 4314, Anna Street. While I do understand that information about specific personnel can't be made available earlier, I feel frustrated. I'm here with you almost every meeting, and when I come to the committee meetings, I don't have any detail. There isn't any public discussion, and I do feel that whether or not nurses are more available or less, whether or not subs are available to be hired due to how much they're being paid, shifting people around, I do feel that that is a public conversation that people want to participate in. And I do understand this is not a question and answer session, it's a comment session. However, I would have been unable to ask any questions of anyone individually prior to walking in and picking up the agenda. And that is a frustration and a concern, I think, for the public and the parents. More information would be better. Our desire is to communicate with you about our concerns, learn what's going on, share with you why we're concerned and what we'd like to see happen. And it's extremely difficult to do when our only opportunity is when you walk in, we get an agenda, and you vote. So I would just appreciate more information available earlier in the month during the committee meetings so that we can participate more, when possible. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mrs. Cook, may I make a comment?
You want to go before board comments?
No, I want to comment on what was just said. I'd like to point out, we don't get all this information way ahead of time. Typically, we get our copy of the agenda on Friday, and many, many times, we go into the executive meeting, an hour, we start at seven o'clock, and there are changes to it then. So this is something that is changing continually, and it's not like we have this thing and we're sitting on it trying to hide it from everybody for, you know, two weeks.
And regarding public discussion, we can't even have public discussion on it this evening when it is regarding legal reasons and students. As Dr. Pasquarela said, if it's your individual child, you can come and meet with your principal, Mrs. Sutton, Dr. Pasquarela, and discuss your child. We cannot openly discuss children and placements for, or placements of staff for children. We just have to make the arrangements that have to be made regarding their well-being and legal.
And to add on to that, we as board members are not even given students names. You'll notice down in this situation under other, we are given numbers. So we don't have that information either, so just let me.
And I don't think it's an issue of discussing why you're doing what you're doing, I think it's an issue of having a conversation about the coverage available when nurses are out.
Anybody else then? We're finished with public comments. I'm going to move into board comments, and Mrs. Dobus, I'll start at your end this evening.
I was just so pleased with Dr. Stark's staff report about all of the classroom successes and the music awards and the sports excellence, the teachers that have been recognized, the community that is involved, the rotary giving dictionaries to our third graders is amazing, how the students help with community service projects such as the Socks to Shim, all the grants that are received. I just think so many wonderful things are happening in this district, and now we have a new teacher's contract, and that will help to fuel this positive attitude of excellence for years to come. It's a great place to live and to raise your kids. It's a pleasure to serve on this board, and I thank you all for being here and voicing your views about the things that we're doing or not doing also. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Means.
Yeah, I would like to say that, you know, I was very pleased with all the special awards and recognition that the students have, and particularly with the state championship by the cheerleaders, that's a special achievement. But the big event of the night was the teacher's contract. And anytime you go into contract negotiations, it's necessarily an adversarial process. Sometimes it's more adversarial than others, but the give and take was pretty good this time, and we didn't get everything we wanted. I'm sure the teachers didn't get what they wanted. It wasn't we won, it wasn't the teachers won, but really, it was the citizens of Bethel Park and the students of the school district were the real winners.
I concur. Mrs. Buckley?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I would like to congratulate all the parties who were concerned and involved with the new teacher's contract, looking forward to continuing a partnership with the many people involved in educating the students of Bethel Park. Also, Mrs. O'Rourke, I'd like to thank you and your team for the hours that you put into creating a calendar. It's not as easy as some people think. There are things that must be looked at very carefully, most importantly, the education of our children and the number of days involved, but also there are contract regulations and so on that have to be there that might, everybody might not know about. But bottom line, it's for the education of our kids. Dr. Stark, I'd like to wish you well, have a great time and enjoy, and have a healthy retirement. You've worked very hard, and your efforts are most appreciated. And also, PTO, I say this every month, and I mean it sincerely, thank you for all the things that you folks do, PTO, PTA for our students. There's a lot of hours that you also spend for our kids, and it is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Spicuzza.
Well, there's many, many things going through my mind at the moment, and I, Mrs. Stark, thank you for the wonderful report. Unfortunately, it's the last one, so we'll remember it well, and good luck to you in the future, as, I couldn't say it better than Cindy did, so I'm not going to try. The contract is a big step in the right direction for Bethel Park. I think that it's important that we did this and for the students, the staff, the school board, everyone, the teachers, the parents, it's just, it's a great thing. Participation that we see at our meetings is something I really appreciate. I think that as vice president, I get to review the agenda prior to the, it even being posted. I see it before everybody else sees it. And there are just certain things that we cannot put in there, and there are certain things that, you know, you don't want to put someone's name in as, going to be receiving a job, and then something changes and it doesn't happen. There's all kind of issues with that. A lot of times with, when we're bidding projects, we know that there's three bidders on the projects, we try not to list their names in case something changes, somebody pulls their name. There's a lot of reasons why some of the information you don't see isn't there. But I do believe at our committee meeting, we try to do as much discussion as we can and that we're legally able to do. And I also like to thank my fellow board members who got recognized tonight. I think that it's truly been more than eight years, actually, but I know how PSBA works.
They're slow.
And if you count the hours, it's probably about 14 years, actually. But that's fine. I think that the reason our board is successful and has been recognized in the past is that we don't come with agendas. We are here for one reason, one reason only, the education of the students of Bethel Park. And I think that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rule.
Dr. Stark, I wish you well. Been a pleasure to serve with you, and I think we're off to a great year, and listening to all of the report that you had, as usual. I want to say that I am one of, one of the few up here that have an opportunity to go and represent our school at different levels. One of the boards I sit on, we represent 42 schools. Another one's 14 schools. And I'm probably one of two directors on both boards that enjoy working with their own board. And it's surprising, even though we say we have issues, that they often look to Bethel Park, they will call on me to find out what we're doing, and if there an issue, how maybe we have, we had it and had we addressed it. So that's kind of a nice position to be in. So I really feel good when I leave the district and when I see what a lot of the other districts are encountering. We are well positioned, and we are well-staffed, we're educationally signed, fiscally signed. There are so many schools, you can't imagine and even, you can't even recognize some of the schools that really are not in a very good financial position, and with all the cuts and things that are on the horizon, are not really feeling very good. But I feel very confident that we're doing fine, and it's just, it's just nice to know that they call on us, is one of their role models in many things, and that's a nice position to be in. Monday night, we were honored at the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, and all the divisions give us little gifts, like the Little Dart Program. They make us little hands and put a poem on it, and we get to see what all the kids do. Probably the most rewarding meeting I have all year there. They also gave us this year some books that will go to our libraries, and one is about the Jackie Robinson story, his growing up, and that's a really good book to read. So I'll be handing that over. There's another one, I'm sure it's for elementary, If You Give a Mouse a Cookie. And then we each got a book, and I don't know who picked it out, that's supposed to be indicative of the particular director that it's going to. I don't know why, but I got Rosie, I'm glad it's not Rosie the River.
We thought it was Rosie the River.
It's Rosie the River Engineer. And I'm just assuming it's because I'm with the vocation side, so, but anyway. So these all go to our library, so that was kind of a nice gift that they're giving to each other so that our kids can enjoy them. The other thing is that on February 7th, at the Steel Center Career and Technology School, which used to be, as you know, formerly the Vocational Education School, we'll be celebrating the 100th year that vocational education has been around. So that's really a long time, and it has come a long way. And one of the meetings that I had this week is something that we're looking at is to how we can create a pathway from the high school and your Career Technology Center right to the Community College to a college, if you choose to do that or not, go into the trades, and try to see if we can't begin making that connection. And that's a big step because we're probably one of the last career school that's positioned that way, so there'll be some good things coming out over in the next year or two. So they've come a long way, but 100 years old, that's a long time. I know, I've been to this school 100 years ago, and we used to laugh at all the students that went on just to be the tradesmen. They're the ones now that are charging you like $50 just to come to your door, and then you charge for them to fix it. So, you know, in the end, they really made out. But those are two nice things that we get to do, and just want to thank you for having the opportunity to serve on those boards.
Thank you, Mr. Workmeister.
All right, I, like Mr. Spicuzza there, I feel the same way. I have annoying things I'd like to say, but a lot of them have been said, but I'm going to have to reiterate some of those because they warrant it, such as Dr. Stark, thank you again for all your help and me getting to know you for at least one year anyhow, personally, you know, a little closer that we knew you before that. Also, with the PTA and all the people that volunteer and everybody being here, it's important that people are in the audience. You'll get to learn more, as you sit here and start reading between the lines, so we don't have to say things that are illegal or whatever. But being, this is my first contract, being that I'm new too, but it was a real, it was a, I don't know how, I can't find the right word to say it, but it was, it was very beautiful to be here and working with the great board and also with the teachers. It was a lot more difficult than I thought, and I can say from my experience that we did really negotiate, and the top goal was for the kids. We definitely did not want to strike, and we definitely wanted to keep in mind with the taxpayers and everybody. And the other thing I wanted to say was, there was a parent that came to me to say, and this is why, I guess, the pins and that, we thank you for that. Bethel Park, actually, they came to Bethel Park, they moved here a while ago, and they moved here because of the fact that Bethel Park is noted for the help that they give to the kids that are in need. And we should be a proud district here for what we all do, for all the kids and everybody else, so it's a, it's a great district. That's all I'll say for now, because I've been talking too much.
Thank you. Mr. Amadis?
Yeah, just one more quick comment. You know, I have been on the board for a while, and I've had a chance to vote on a few contracts with the teachers. And I feel that this contract, I feel more comfortable voting on this than any other and saying yes to this one than any other I have voted on, because I think it's the best in terms of equity and fairness to the teachers and to their students that they teach, and more importantly, or just as importantly, to the citizens and residents of Bethel Park in terms of the taxes and how those will be handled. Other than that, I did want to say, Mrs. Stark, it's been a pleasure being here. I too, like Mrs. Cook, was over at William Penn when you came over there, so I've been with you for the long haul. And I lastly want to say that all these students' accolades that we have and the teacher accolades that we have seen up here, it's just indicative of the type of school district we have, and makes me super proud to live in the community we live in. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I think as a board, we do try to do our best, to do what's in the best interests of our students, families, staff, teachers, administrators, and our community as a whole. Can we improve? We can always improve. Anyone can always improve. I want to thank my fellow board members for all that they do, which I know is their best, they give of themselves, and I promise that I will continue to strive to do my best as your board president. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.